This time we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start our meeting with the invocation and pledge. I'll pray, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the allow, to allow us the opportunity to serve you, serve our community, pray that the decisions made here tonight will bless our community, pray that you'll guide us and keep us safe as we travel home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any announcements? This time, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting held on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Island Planning Commission meeting minutes from the last meeting held on February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Now come to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Stephanie Lee, Planning and Zoning Director. So for these next three items, you have a ZM twenty-five-three, which is a rezone, VP twenty-five-two, which is village preservation, and SP twenty-five-four, which is a site plan. And all of these are related to six fifteen Ocean Boulevard. So I'll give one presentation and kind of go through all of it, but then I will ask for the commission to take each of these votes separately, and you'll have actually three separate public hearings as well. So three separate public hearings and then three separate votes on each of these items. But it'll save a little time by having just the one presentation. So this property is currently zoned village mixed use, and the village mixed use is specifically states that it can be either a commercial use or it can only be residential if it's mixed with a commercial use. So the commercial would need to be on one level and the residential would be on the second. You know, most likely you have situations where the commercial's on the ground level and residential above. So there, that is the only situation where you could have a residential use, or if there was, you know, an older single-family home that's been there since prior to the sixties and it was existing, then that can continue to be residential. But for this particular property located on Ocean Boulevard in the Village, there had been a duplex on the site and it was demolished a few years ago, so the property has been vacant. And there's been a lot of interest in this property over the years. Last year, you may recall, for the folks that are on the commission last year, there was an application for this property for a single-family home that had, and they were looking to actually do something similar, but it was a different design property, and there's a different applicant that's before you for this application. So they are looking to rezone it to a planned development district to allow a single-family home on the site. There's a few other changes that are included in the PD district. They would have a lot coverage of sixty percent, and then, or site coverage of sixty percent, and then they would be reducing the minimum lot size from six thousand square feet to fifty-five hundred, and that would make that lot align with what it currently is sized acts as currently some standard. And then they also have, as I mentioned, the village preservation and the site plan applications as well. And just to note, any planned development district applications that are for three acres or for under three acres, a site plan is required. So even if it's a single family, and you typically don't see a site plan for a single family because it's a PD under three acres, that's why you're seeing the site plan this evening. So here's the property, it's at the corner of twelfth and Ocean. And just to kind of note, so this is, the VMU district is this kind of pink, the village residential is this kind of lighter purple behind it, and then the village, the village, like the island preservation overlay does extend actually out to Demary, so a little bit further out from the site. So it's near the end of the overlay, but it's just a few blocks shy of it. And here's just an area of where the property is located. And currently, there is a mix around here. There's a good bit of single-family homes, there's also across the way, there's a commercial business, so it's a bit of a mixed use, but it's a little bit more residential on this end of the village. And so here's just excerpts from the planned development text that's in your packet. So this is what they would allow. They would allow, if this was approved, one-family dwelling, government-owned operated use facility or land, group home, accessory uses, home occupations, or a lawfully existing building, but it's, there's no building on the site now. But this would be in the future, if it was redeveloped in the future. And then here's some of their, their standards and their requirements. So there would be a fifty-five hundred square foot lot size, lot width of fifty feet. The front yard would be twenty feet, and the side yard, there would actually not be any side yard requirement, is what this PD says, and the rear yard would be seven feet. And then they are limiting it to a two-story dwelling that does not exceed thirty-five And then the sixty percent lot coverage I mentioned before. And then here is their site plan they proposed. They do show access coming off of Ocean and twelfth. And then the single-family home is here. They have a garage in the rear and then a pool as well. Just zoomed in of that. And then here is their tree plan. So they have, there's a tree in the back here, I think it's a thirty-inch live oak that would be removed where the shed is going to be located, and they are proposing to plant a new tree really kind of right behind it, near the property line. And then I think the other tree that's being removed, I think it's down here, I don't, I should have probably zoomed in version of this one. And then there's also a very large live oak that's adjacent to twelfth street that is in the public right of way, it's not on the property, but if you are looking at the property, it, you know, feels like it might be on this property, but it's in twelfth street. And so here's their proposed colorism materials for the single-family home, and this is part of the village preservation requirements. And then they did include a detailed landscape plan. And then here are their proposed elevations of this structure. The floor plans. And then here's the other side elevation here. And then I do have just all the motions kind of separately on these slides. So we have to answer any questions, and Jake Lemmings is here from Robert Civil Engineering. If you have any questions, thank you.
I have a question. Could you go back to the permitted uses, please? What's a group home?
So a group home in our code is specific to, basically it needs to have a connection to the state or, so, you know, like a group home for like individuals with disabilities. That's basically what would fall under a group home. So there's kind of a very specific criteria in our, in our code about group homes.
If the plan is to build a single-family dwelling, why are there other uses in there?
And that, yeah, that could be something that could be, you know, brought up by, by the planning commission if you would like to limit it to that. But, yeah, that's, I'm, that could be something that could be more limited.
That would be under the, the first one, the rezoning, that'll, would have to be, would have to be approved by the county commission, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Stephanie, just real quick, what is the main difference between the planned development and the village residential?
So the village residential, well, so planned development, it kind of depends on what the planned development is. I mean, this particular planned development, I mean, they, they are a little bit more in line with what the village residential is, like the thirty-five-foot height limit, and there are, the setback, like they have no setback shown for their side, but I think village residential has a seven-foot setback for their side. So it's, this is a little bit closer to village residential than VMU, but, yeah, the PD is really kind of, specific zoning for, for the property can kind of, someone can sort of create their own, you know, whatever is approved by the county.
Is that thirty-five-foot requirement or height limit part of village residential?
Yes, so village residential is thirty-five feet.
Okay, so they're suggesting that it be in alignment with the current, okay.
Correct, yeah, so it would be more fitting with what's behind it, so there's a potential behind there.
I have a question, this is super specific. For the tree that they mentioned planting across the property line, I just curious, Stephanie, if you know, what is the restrictions or regulations about doing that? And do they have to have the neighbor's permission because obviously it's going to continue to grow, so that oak tree then would be in the neighbor's property as well?
Yeah, so they show, let's see, I've just zoomed into the landscape plan, let me see if that shows a little bit better. So they are, yeah, they're showing it very, I mean, the trunk is going to be planted on their property, but, I don't know, I mean, our county arborist did review it and didn't have any, didn't indicate that there was any violations of the tree ordinance with this, but correct, it would be growing, yeah, as it grew larger going into that neighbor's property.
Yeah, but, but for clarification, it's planted on their property.
Yeah, the new ones, the new ones are planted on their property. The one that's getting removed is on that rear property line. And then this one over here.
The, I have, the, the tree that they're removing is on their property currently, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct, yeah. Let me, this one doesn't show it.
And I think it said the...
Yeah, it's where this X is located.
In the back, the back tree.
Yeah.
And I was...
By the shed driveway right here.
And the county made a recommendation that there was no issue with removing that tree, even though it's a certain age?
Yeah, I mean, the county arborist did not indicate that there were any issues. I mean, I notated in my report that, you know, perhaps if the shed was not going there, that they could keep the tree because there wouldn't be a building going there, but there wasn't, yeah, the county arborist didn't notate that there were any issues with that.
Last question, would that, if, would that be a modification to the, the second step?
So, yeah, so this, yeah, that would be under the, so the site, the tree plan would actually go in conjunction with the site plan, but it's also part of village preservation as well. So if there were any amendments that the planning commission wanted to make, you could, so village preservation would be the, is the next one, so you could do that under the village preservation.
Any other questions for staff? And Stephanie, you just covered the first one, correct?
So I did end up covering all of them, so all of the images, yeah, so I did all three, but, but when you get to the public hearings, you'll have three separate ones and three separate votes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Would applicant like to speak?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. So Stephanie gave a good overview, I do want to talk about a couple of things. So one question that was brought up was the difference between the village residential and, and then specifically I want to talk about what's allowed in the VMU. So the village mixed use, which is what our property here that we're talking about is zoned for now, as well as these properties here, and, you know, the big, the big reason that we're doing this and not just rezoning to village residential is the village residential has a six thousand square foot lot size requirement. So the only way to do just a purely residential home on this site is to do a PD text, because if we stayed in the VMU, like Stephanie said, you'd have to have fifty percent for commercial development, and with the size of this lot, future, you know, parking requirements that would be needed, it's just not feasible on this property, which is why you've seen in the past folks come trying to do for residential as well. Now I will say, with the previous development and coming to the IPC, it was asked by the IPC at that time, and I know folks have rotated off and there's new, new members now, to be more of a, the previous home was a three-story, a garage on the first floor, and it was multiple kitchens, and so it was just, and, and it wasn't a cottage feel. So I know the IPC was asking for it to be limited to two floors, which is more in line with the village residential, and then to also have it more of a cottage feel, which is the floor plan you see there from the Southern Living layout. And the, the buyer is here and they can speak more on the design, but it will be, you know, a white home, blue shutter, silver roof, so that, that cottage feel that you see all around the island, that's really more in line with these properties here next to it as well. So some of the, some of the differences, like on village mixed use, so all of these properties here, if you go and take a look, the, the minimum front yard setback is, is none, there's not one for the VMU, the rear setback is none, and the side yard setback is none. So it's a lot more flexible on your, on what you can do on the site. The only density requirement is, it's like thirty-five bedroom, it's like a bedroom requirement, thirty-five rooms per acre. So with the village residential, there's a twenty-foot front yard setback, which we added to the PD for this. There is a seven-foot side yard setback. The issue is just the constraints on this lot, since it's not a six thousand square foot lot, which is why we can't get the full seven-foot side yard. We can on one side, on the twelfth street side, but on the opposite side, you can see here from the, the property line, if I can find the cursor, from the property line to the edge of the, the pool deck, that's around, around, right over three, three to four feet. From the edge of the property line to the home is actually seven feet. So that, that's the reason that we had the side yards that we did in the, in the PD. One thing I want to talk about the uses, so the uses that were shown are the exact uses that came from the village residential. So we tried to make the PD as close as possible to the village residential. Their intent is to do a single-family home. If we wanted to strike out the rest of the uses, that wouldn't be an issue. We were purely trying to match what village residential had in the ordinance right now. The trees, there's one tree, as Stephanie said, to be removed here. So like I said, the previous home was a three-story, it's a small lot, so the, the previous buyer, which this is a, a new buyer here, new applicant, had a garage on the bottom floor, two living floors above, and there's just not room on the site for, to have a two-story home with providing, you know, the twenty-foot setback for the village residential, and, and so on there, there's no garage proposed as part of this footprint, which is the main reason that this, this shed, if you want to call it a shed or a, a smaller garage, is needed for bicycle parking, golf cart parking, and that's really the main use for it, would be to, to park a golf cart there. And so that, that again is the main reason for that tree to be removed, which has this tree here proposed, and the location of this tree, I mean, we can shift it if need be, it is on the property, but we have the room up here in the front to place two trees as well. So there's one tree being removed, and then the mitigation for the trees is, let's see, it's, it comes out, it's, per the ordinance, it's twelve, twelve trees per acre, and we have point one-three acres, which puts us at one point five-six trees required, and we're showing the two trees being planted. So, so I think that, hopefully that speaks and answers some of the questions, and I'm happy to answer any more you have and the applicants here, and they can speak as well if you'd like them to.
All right. Any questions for this applicant?
Yes, I have one. When you were proposal to replant a tree, is it going to be an oak tree or something in similar?
It would be a two-inch live oak.
It'd be a two-inch live oak? And is this, is this going to be a primary residence?
They would have to speak to that.
I'm Brenda McCurdy, and this is my husband, Bill McCurdy, and we're the applicants, and we want to thank the board for allowing us to come before you with this opportunity, and thank you for your service, and introduce ourselves to neighbors here, too. So we're from Lounts County. My name is Brenda McCurdy, and my husband, Bill McCurdy, he's a farmer and I'm a nurse, and we've been planning for our retirement for about four years and looking at different places that we might could have a second home. You know, we went with St. Simon's because it's so beautiful, there's so many activities and so many things that we would enjoy as far as spending time with our family and friends. I'm very nervous, so sorry. So this wouldn't be our primary home because we do live on Barton in Lounts County, but we do intend to come back and forth and spend a lot of time here. A lot of people are concerned maybe about rentals, so that isn't our plan at this time. You know, we want to use it ourselves, we want to have people over and just really enjoy the area. Nobody knows about, you know, the future, if income changes, if health issues happen, one of us passes, you know, I mean, I can't say forever, but for our purposes, me and my husband, we want to use it for a second home to spend a lot of time here with family. As far as the build, is the Southern Living, is the cottage style, and I think it's kind of consistent with the neighborhood as well. So maybe, any questions about that?
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you.
Would it, would it, would it be put in the short-term rental pool at all?
So we don't have plans to do that, no, sir.
Okay.
But I will say...
Well, I mean, if our circumstances change with our...
I can't tell you it never would be, I mean...
Income, health issues.
I call them, so from year to year, I mean, you never know. I don't have any teachers that do that, but circumstances could change.
No, I mean, and honestly, we really do want to use it, you know, for our family and friends and our enjoyment. And, and when it's your personal kind of residence, it's not like you necessarily want to have to rent it out for strangers' use. There's a lot of wear and tear and a lot of issues with liability, so no, sir, that's really not our intent.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is the public hearing portion of our meeting, and we'd like to open this up to anyone that would like to speak in favor of the project.
Good evening, my name is Jake Irwin, and I own six eleven and six eleven and a half Mayo, which is the T straight up twelfth into Mayo. If you are facing a lighthouse, just turn straight around, you'll see my house. I'm actually subleasing or I should say lease-purchased to two other individuals. They couldn't be here tonight, but they've asked me that I stand in their stead as well. Jonathan Tennant, one of our harbor pilots, has asked me to be here as well, and Miss Suzanne Jennings has asked me to be here as well, she also lives on Mayo. To be very candid, I think for myself and that group of people, we were looking for reasons to oppose. We had a prior application that I think everybody was not happy with, and we were happy with, and we were pleased with what the commission did and got us back to this point, and I think we were concerned. At this point, I'm going to say, just an overarching concern that's going to continue that I'm hearing is, what's even, regardless of what side you fall on this, what precedent this does set for continued waivers or slippery slope for changes in village mixed use. We, and we've discussed that internally, we understand that there's a rock and a hard place. Everybody wants to keep it that quaint, you know, village cottagey style, but also there's some commercial needs that come up, and that's a tension that you all have to manage. I don't think that's anything that we can address here today, given our options with these potential buyers, or these buyers and the plans that they presented. The only other potential objections, one, somebody was asking about trees that I spoke with, that's, I leave that to your all's judgment. I know there's rules. I don't know how that tree is, and I don't know if we want to try to save it over a shed for a golf cart. I don't, but if they're replacing it and that works for y'all, that's not big enough for objection. I do know there's concern about parking. It appears that though there's an entry from above Ocean and 12th where they could park vehicles. I think everybody's, nobody likes a bunch of street parking, and I know that there's not supposed to be overnight parking, but it happens all too often on these side streets, and that's just a concern, particularly across, if you cross over Mejo, there is a business that, we know that there's, it's a private business, but there's, there's public parking that happens there all too often as well. So I think just generally, the people on 12th up into Mejo are worried about, you know, people that aren't supposed to be there, or just the look of clutter or the inability to pass. Those are minor things that I know you all deal with every day, but overall, I'm going to say on behalf of myself and those five individuals, I'm not going to oppose the plan that we've seen it as it is now. And particularly for these buyers, it seems far different than what we're facing. I do have one question to ask, is we understood there's two signs on the lot. One was for this hearing, and then there's another hearing coming up in April. And we wanted to know if there was any chance that there's a switcheroo or anything, that something changes, and if somebody could help us to know what that other hearing's about, or if we need, I've got to come up here again, that'd be great. Thank you.
Can you answer that, Stephanie?
Actually, before we, before I respond to that, so just to be clear, this public hearing would be for the rezon portion, and people are free to comment however, but just to be clear, this is public hearing for the rezon, and then we'll have two more public hearings. So the notice that's on the site is actually for the Board of Commissioners meeting. So if the IPC takes action this evening, then that April meeting is when the Board of Commissioners will hear the rezon. So the site plan and the village preservation, the final approval is here, but the rezon will go to the Board of Commissioners. So that's what that second date is for.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
And just to, just to be clear, I saw the site plan that was before this sheet, it didn't show the pavers and stuff around, which the one on the portal does, but this is the, this is the plan here. Just want to make sure everybody, so this is the plan that would be going to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the project?
Good evening. Thank you for your time and your service. Thank you for being here and listening to us talk about this project. We're very excited about it. My name is Kelly Diggers, and I'm the broker and owner of Kelly Diggers Realty. I've been a longtime member of the Golden Isles Association of Realtors, and I'm here today on behalf of my clients, Brenda and Bill McCurdy. I'm in support of this project for the property at 615 Ocean Boulevard. Since December of 2024, I've had the pleasure of working with the McCurdy's as they searched for the right home on St. Simon's Island. They toured many properties, but none fully met their vision. They always had a vision for a coast house in the Pier Village and never wavered. It made my job pretty tough. We found the lot, the vacant lot on Ocean Boulevard, and they immediately fell in love with it. It's a wonderful location, and all of the properties around it are aesthetically beautiful. As a Realtor since 1995, I know it's rare to have buyers willing to invest both time and money into a project like this. From the beginning, the McCurdy's have been diligent, thoughtful, and committed to ensuring that their plans align with the character of the neighborhood. They quickly engaged Robert's Engineering Firm to evaluate the highest and best use of the property, demonstrating their dedication to responsible development and their respect for the surrounding community. I feel that the footprint that they are presenting tonight is a wonderful addition to the Pier Village area and will not disturb the beautiful aesthetics of the village community. We all recognize that not every project presented to this commission has been in harmony with the neighborhood. Some steps that have been taken that differentiate this project from previous ones include decreasing the design from a three-story to a two-story. Also using previous materials such as rock and shell in the driveway. Finally, Bill and Brenda McCurdy are wonderful people and have been an absolute delight to work with. I feel strongly that the neighboring property owners will find them to be sincere and integrous, individuals who care deeply about the community that they hope to join. I urge you to support this project as it reflects not only on the McCurdy's personal investment, but also their desire to enhance the character and appeal of St. Simon's Island. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the project? Anyone like to speak in opposition of the project?
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Jim Hunky. I live on Magnolia Avenue, about a block and a half away from the 615 Ocean Boulevard. I'm not opposed to the construction of a single-family home being built at this location. In fact, I think that would be preferable to the vacant lot, which has been frequently overgrown and full of trash, since the original one-story brick structure was torn down in October 2019 without a demolition permit from the county. I understand the desire to rezone the property from village mixed use to something residential, since the desired use is for single-family residence. I appreciate the fact they want to make it similar to village residential, as my house is. My preference would have been to find a way to add this property to village residential, but because the lot is a substandard size, I understand that might not be possible. That said, I strongly oppose rezoning the property to a planned development zone as currently proposed. Currently, there's only one planned development property in the village overlay district. That is at the, in the village, at the corner of Mallory Street and Beech U Drive, across from Barbara James, where the tiny shops used to be. That PD was approved for the owner of Sea Island to build it as a museum of Western art, which in my view was totally inconsistent with the preservation and character of the village overlay district. Thank goodness, nothing has been built there yet, but that set a bad precedent for the use of PDs in the village overlay district. If a planned development zone is the only solution to building a single-family residence at this site, then I believe the language of the PD should conform to all of the relevant zoning ordinances for a residential zone. Most importantly, the Glen County zoning ordinance contains very specific language for building a residential structure on a substandard-sized lot and a residential zone district. These requirements are clearly stated in Section 507 of the zoning ordinance and a section titled "Use of Substandard Lots of Record." This lot would fall under Section 507.2, Paragraph C, which states, "If the lot area or lot width is between 75 and 94% of the minimum lot size or area required under the applicable zoning district, said dwellings shall have no more than one and a half stories. It should have a maximum height of 28 feet, and the total number of sleeping rooms should be no more than four." The proposed zone change to PD and site plans show a two-story structure at 35 feet, greater than the 1.5 stories and 28 feet high required under Section 507 for a single-family structure built on a residential lot, substandard residential lot. If you were to take this same substandard-sized lot and place it in any other residential neighborhood on St. Simon's Island, Glen Haven, Kings Terrace, Sea Palms, even in the village residential area, you would not be allowed to build this house because it does not comply with the requirements set forth in Section 507 of the use of substandard lots of record in residential areas. The house would have too many stories and be too tall. Yet this PD, the text, would allow the construction of this same oversized residence in the village historic district, the most restrictive construction zone on the island. So visitors that are entering the village overlay district on Ocean Boulevard, one of the main thoroughfares, one of the first structures they would see is a house that would be too big to build on a substandard lot anywhere else on the island, and anywhere else in Glen County, for that matter. The use of a planned development zoning change to avoid county building requirements for single-family residences on substandard lots, particularly to build taller and more massive structures in the village preservation overlay district, would set a disturbing precedent, and I guarantee it would be used as the blueprint for future developers to further destroy the historical and architectural character of the village area as intended to be preserved by the village overlay district. Lastly, I do not think that the proposed two-story residential frontage with decks on each level facing Ocean Boulevard is in keeping with the character of the other adjacent residences. The owners at 601, 605, and 609 Ocean Boulevard lovingly restored the original single-story beach home structures facing Ocean Boulevard at great personal expense, preserving perhaps the very best example of the historical and architectural heritage we have in the village area. Building a large, modern, two-story residence next door will certainly distract from the unique and beautiful street frontage that we have today. Sadly, that would be a distinct loss of character for our village preservation district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition of the project?
For myself and everybody I just spoke for, if there's something inconsistent with the law, then we're opposed, period. Without, without a waiver, without some sort of, if this was the hearing for that, we didn't hear that. So if there's something inconsistent with the law, and if what this gentleman just said is right, that this house wouldn't get built anywhere else, the answer's no far for us.
Thank you.
Stephanie, could you maybe come up and clarify, I think just for everyone's sake right now, essentially, what are the options like that could be done with this property development-wise, and why they want this, if they want it to be turned into a house in the rezoning? And just, like I said, you know, he's kind of representing the neighbors, like, let's make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, so having a single-family home is not allowed under the current VMU zoning. So they could only do residential if it's in conjunction with with commercial, and that still is a conditional use permit, but that could be something they could apply for. So just having purely residential on the site with no commercial could not be allowed at all. So they would have to rezone the property to something else. And so part of, and so what was talked about with the Section 507, the substandard lots of record section, by rezoning to planned development district, that essentially addresses that concern. If they were to try to redevelop it under a conventional zoning district, what the gentleman said about limiting the height, the number of bedrooms, and the number of stories, you know, would come into effect. But the planned development district, if this is approved, basically sets the lot size and the lot width in compliance with this particular lot. So it basically makes it compliant with the PD text, and that substandard section would not come into play at all. So that, so the PD kind of like basically fixes that, that issue that would be in place under another's any district.
And can you clarify if they have the option to essentially apply to, just so everyone has it on the record, apply to do a house that would be the 28-foot restriction, all that, could this property be zoned that way?
Yeah, I mean, one option could be, I mean, the applicant had applied for, to rezone it to village residential, and that's where that, that substandard lot of record restrictions would come into play if they were to rezone to village residential. And technically, we really can't rezone a lot that's, you know, to make it not more nonconforming. So that would be, you know, a situation that with the PD text was kind of the best fit, given the scenario here and what they wanted to do.
Go ahead.
Stephanie, and again, just to clarify, there, so if, is there a height requirement for village residential at this time? Is it 28 or is it 35?
So 35, as long as the lot is 6,000 square feet or greater. So this one, because it's under 6,000 square feet, and the lot width is why there's those restrictions.
Okay. And, because I'm just looking, I drove through the neighborhood, I think there's a 607 Mejo Street is also a two-story structure, and it's in village residential. So their height requirement would be the 35 feet, but their lot was more than likely the 6,000 square feet where they're able to do that.
Possibly, yeah, I'm not sure that lot. Either that, or it was built prior to the restrictions. So the substandard lot of record section, I think, just came into play in like 2016. It's pretty new for the county. So anything that would have been built prior to that did not have to have those height and stories restrictions. So if it was older, then that may be the case, or it's complying, either way.
So there are other substandard lots in that area?
There, yeah, I can't give a number off the top of my head, but there, there are, because there, you know, there's some older, older subdivision, older plot lots.
Do you know if there are any other substandard lots that have a similar home on it to this?
I would have to check into that. Yeah, I don't know offhand.
I think there are plenty of substandard lots all over the island, in every neighborhood that, because we've come up this, with, come up, this has come up a lot in the ordinance we write.
And in response to...
But there are a fair amount all around.
In response to what he brought up after the other gentleman spoke, if it's rezoned PD, would it be, and they build this home on it, would be in any violation of the ordinance?
No, it would be, yeah, it would be, from what they're proposing, everything would be legal and compliance with, with the ordinance by rezoning it to PD.
So as long as it's rezoned PD, it would be in compliance?
Correct, yes, sir.
And I want to ask you something real quick, Stephanie, that Jake touched on. So in his slide where he had the different uses that, like, had the group home or whatever for the, and you said that you could take all those out and just leave residential, that's an option, correct? So that it's just a residential?
Yeah, I mean, that could be an option that either the applicant voluntarily says they will remove that, I mean, that's kind of the best-case scenario, or if they want to keep those uses, the planning commission could still make that as a condition of your, like, if you were inclined to approve it, you could approve it conditional upon, you know, only these uses allowed on the site, and that could be your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just one more thing. If it's not rezoned, it is zoned now for a commercial building?
Correct.
Okay.
Commercial and residential.
And commercial and residential.
So it would have to be mixed, or?
Yes.
Uh, no, it doesn't have, well, to do residential, it would have to be mixed with commercial, and then there's still a separate conditional use permit process to do that.
Okay, but not to do, in other words, a commercial building could be built on that property as it's zoned?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, just, Stephanie.
Just want to say one thing. So the applicant here, they printed off from this, and I can show it to y'all. Obviously, the home's been demoed, but the previous home that was there was shown as a two-story home, and it was, the square footage of the home, it was right over, it says 2,000 square feet, which is obviously, I mean, it's more kind of in line with what we're doing here. So I'm happy to turn this in if y'all, if y'all wanted to see this. But this was just pulled online. Obviously, I never saw the home, but it is here.
I have...
Yeah.
Sorry, continue.
No, that's it, go ahead.
I have a question for you while you're up here, because you're the perfect person to ask. So one of my questions, I mean, in general, I think the concept of commercial there doesn't make a lot of sense, given that it's in this residential area, and that residential seems to be the more fitting type of development there. But one of my questions and concerns is about the parking. So I wanted to see, while we have this slide up, if you could walk us through, the driveway obviously is going over the sidewalk, but if you could walk us through the parking scenario, and based off this one, there might be numbers in this one, I just, I can't see based on the size, like, the number of parking spaces, and then how many we think we could realistically fit in the front driveway, and then, I don't know, could anything fit in that side driveway that was actually on their property? Because if the shed is being used for bicycles and golf carts, then, I mean, obviously, we're not going to have a car in there, too. So that was one of my questions, because obviously, if you're having a number of guests and family, friends, everything, usually on average, you might have one car per couple.
Right.
So I just wanted to see what would, that would look like. And then, like Mr. Irwin was saying, how would that affect cars and everything with them being on the corner? We wouldn't... We wouldn't want to end up having cars parked on the corner with traffic.
Absolutely. So with the single-family, the parking requirement is, we, you know, we show the two spaces here. Technically, it's a little bit, uh, longer than that. Obviously, the cars would be outside of the property line at that point, which honestly is kind of what these properties are doing, the, I don't know if they're parking there, but the gravel goes all the way up to the sidewalk same way. So my answer to that would be, we have the two parking space requirement met for the single-family, and say they have a lot of guests coming, I mean, we're talking about a three-bedroom home, but say they have multiple guests coming, not saying to park on somebody else's property, but the church parking lot is directly across the street. Um, so I would think if I were coming here to visit and there weren't enough parking spots, then, you know, there's the, the church parking lot potentially that, you know, folks could park in to stay off the street. And then to speak to this, this point here, you could fit one car in up here. It would, it would not be in the road, but it would be over that property line, 'cause this would be diffused. Uh, the car wouldn't obviously be able to pull into this area. So you could fit one car here and two cars here, but these two cars would be within the property boundary.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition of the project? This time, we will close the public hearing on ZM-25-3, 615 Ocean Boulevard Rezone. Any discussion? And Stephanie, we're going to vote on these individually?
Yes, sir, I hope you can take a vote on this one and then move to the Village Preservation and Site Plan.
Any commissioner discussion on?
I think we should go with restricting, so it's just single-family home, and also so that we're really transparent with the neighbors and if they're willing to and everything. I think we should just go ahead and add that in there.
Yeah.
As a condition.
I'm sorry, Stephanie said it may be better if we withdraw that, and the applicant said they're willing to withdraw that, so if that does help for whatever reason-
Okay.
-we're good to pull out and just do single-family.
Okay. So we don't have to make any amendment?
Any modifications?
Any modifications to it if they withdraw?
I think that's probably part of their condition, though, with that, even though the applicant has said that they are withdrawing that, 'cause that was initially in the application.
Or do it for the record.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably best to go ahead and put that as a condition, so approve with that condition that the applicant do that, um, yeah, I think that's probably the way to go.
Would we make the condition that it would be residential use only?
Single family.
Single family.
Single family.
We only need to go back to the PD.
One-family dwelling, okay.
That's what-
Yeah, I'll look at the exact language that's in there. Um, yeah, only, um, so I think, just to clarify, though, I think it'd be one-family dwelling. I think you would still want accessory uses and home occupation. So one, four, and five, do you still need six, though?
You would need one, four, five, and six, just so you'd remove two and three?
Yeah, just two, yeah, two and three would address the concerns here.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion.
Sorry, I'll go back to that.
Um, I would recommend the approval of, of the proposed zoning decision with the modifications of removing two and three in the proposed uses-
For many uses.
Uh, for the site.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor? unanimous, that passes?
So if you can have the, if you want to open up, unless there's any other, um, questions about the Village Preservation, if you want to open that public hearing up and then close that, and you can vote on that one.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing for VP-25-2, 615 Ocean Boulevard Village Preservation. Would the applicant like to speak on that, or have we covered it?
I believe we've covered mostly everything. Jake Lemmings, Robert Silver, I believe we've covered mostly everything. If you have any questions or if anything comes up, have you talked more?
Okay, thank you. Is anyone that would like to speak in favor of that one, that we haven't covered in the first one? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition of that one?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I don't have prepared to speak, talk from points for this, but I will address, now that we have two PDs that we're looking at in, in the Island Preservation District. What the Island Preservation District says is that it is to provide additional oversight of development, regulate inappropriate haphazard and inharmonious improvements and alterations to properties. The fact that we went from a single-story original brick building that was torn down without demolition permit back in 2019 to now a two-story home, really, to me, seems like we're setting a precedent here for a blueprint for how people can get around kind of the, the intent of the Village Preservation area. My other point is that, you know, the way that the, the, uh, the frontage of this house facing Ocean Boulevard, it's essentially a full two-story structure with a peak roof with two balconies facing Ocean Boulevard. When I think about, there's three small cottages, single-story cottages facing the area, it's the most beautiful little cottages in the village, and you're going, the first thing you're going to see when you're coming from East Beach into the village, you're going to see this big, modern, two-story structure. You won't even be able to see these other cottages because this will dominate it. It's not quite as bad as the last plant, uh, the last proposal that we saw where I made the comment that it was like parking a battleship next to some dummies at the, at the St. Simon's Pier, but it is a much bigger structure, and it will essentially, I think, destroy the character of that block. That's just my pers, that's my perspective on it. And I will say that, I know we're down to the PD block, but I think by buying into the idea that we can avoid Section Seven, 507, which was put there for building any residence on any residential area, uh, substandard residential area, we've opened, I think, the floodgates for people putting a lot more PDs in so they can avoid specific things and they can define the rules as they would like to see it. Personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition of the project? We'll close the public hearing on VP-25-2-615 Ocean Boulevard Village Preservation. Any discussion?
I just have a question, um, for you, Mr. Lemming, actually. Um, just looking at the site plan and the tree plan, um, that thirty-inch oak, when I did the math, based on the diameter, breast height of the tree, it's a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-eighty-year-old tree that would be removed roughly for a shed. Is there any way that that shed could be in another place, or is that just not feasible?
I mean, without, really without obstructing the front of the, the home, 'cause it'd be really the only place if I can, that I see, here, I mean, the only place I see is, is somewhere in this area, but then we're talking about obstructing the front view of the home and then potentially, you know, impacting parking. So I, with the, I, I don't see that there is a place for it. We, I know we spoke to this, but I, we did try to plant, you know, mitigate for that tree. Obviously, it can't make up for the hundred-plus years the tree's been there. Um, but no, to answer your question, I don't, I don't believe there is.
How essential is the shed?
I can let the owner speak more to that, but there's no, you know, the big thing for the, the first one is, is we obviously were limited on the space, didn't want to go vertical even more and have a garage on the first floor, uh, so, how critical was the shed? Shed, the shed, from my understanding, is important for, obviously, golf cart, they've spoken to, it's, it's going to be their home that they're not, not at all the time, so leaving a golf cart out, um, obviously, with, with anywhere, it would be risky and having a place for bikes as well, but you want to add anything more?
Thank you. Brenda McCurdy, um, we would be willing to not build the shed or maybe change the size if that's possible, um, so that the tree doesn't have to be taken down.
Okay.
The tree is, isn't it, so it's in front of where the shed would be, so to get anything there, like, the tree's got to go. There's no way to, you can't drive around that big oak tree.
The, that, the issue is the root ball of that tree is to be able to have a door to the side for just a slender golf cart door, uh, the root ball is what's creating the issue there.
How close is it to the foundation, too? 'Cause those roots are really big.
Yeah, I mean, there would, it, it would definitely impact it. There, there's no way to have this shed here and keep that tree.
But I was just wondering, too, like, even if they remove the shed, is that close enough that it would affect the foundation of the house without the shed? Like, would it have to come down anyway just to build?
Um, so usually, when a tree is that close, I mean, I, I, I had a tree that was within a few feet of my house, it would take, you know, years and years and years for the tree to actually be impacted, but I, I can't say without having an arborist go out there and take a look how, how it'd be impacted or not.
Well, I'm, the only reason why I was asking is because, as some people are saying they don't want to approve the shed to save the tree, but if the tree was going to have to come down anyway because it's too close to the house, then it's kind of a mute point, and essentially, the shed should be part of the deal, because I know a lot of people who would not want a massive oak tree that close to the house.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say, and also with the, the limbs and how they're overhanging, how, what they would do to impacting the house, it's hard to say at this point. Um, I, I was going to bring up a couple of things that was brought up just for, you know, respecting the, the VMU and the Village Preservation. You know, we're right, as, you know, Stephanie said, we're kind of right on the boundary here from the residential and then where the start of the commercial is, and, you know, right across the street, there's the bank, and across the street the other way is, you know, a church. So when we're talking about a two-story home, and like I said previously, it is a brick one-story on the bottom, then wood on the top, it's two stories, based on this image in this, this paper here, but, um, so we are, you know, right across 12th is, is a bank, um, and a commercial area, and like I said, church, a church across the ocean. So, um, I just wanted to speak to that, we're right on the edge.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll close the public hearing on VP-25-2, 615 Ocean Boulevard Village Preservation. Any discussion?
Can we go back to the material selections? 'Cause that should be part of this, right?
Yes.
Just make sure everybody's good with the colors, the material selections.
I, I am, I think it's nice.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
And Stephanie, just to be clear, if there were an issue with the, the, the tree and the shed, that would be the next vote, not this vote, correct?
Um, that, that would be part of this vote as well, 'cause the Village Preservation, it's, you're really looking at the design, the landscape plan, so all of that is part of this. I mean, I think if you were going to make it a condition, I would suggest making it as part of the VP and the site plan, if it is having to do with the tree plan. But yeah, you're, 'cause you're really looking at the overall landscape and design of the, of the property.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any.
Do we have a motion? Oh, I have one, one more question, I guess, for Stephanie. The Village Preservation and the site plan, will they be contingent on what the county commission decides about the zoning?
Yes, yeah, they both would be, because they, they can't, they can't do the building on this, you know, on the site without having it rezoned down, so it would be contingent upon that.
Thank you.
But only the rezone goes to the county. Only the rezone goes to the county.
Yeah, but these are the two.
Like, they couldn't put, they couldn't pull a building permit tomorrow on the site because they, they still need to have the rezone down in April with the board of commissioners.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I move to approve application VP-25-2 without modifications.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? No opposed? Move on now to SP-25-4, 615 Ocean Boulevard Site Plan.
Um, so if there's any other questions about this, um, you can open up the public hearing if you'd like.
Would the applicant have anything else they would like to say?
Jake Lemmings, Robert Silver, happy to answer any questions if anything comes up.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of the project? Anyone like to speak in opposition of the project? We will close the public hearing. Any discussion? Any questions for staff? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve SP-25-4 as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor? unanimous? There's nothing else? We're all good?
Just a motion for adjournment if you'd like.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.